Moving now to the legislative session, we've got item number one, the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Melson has a motion to approve, second by Ms. White. Discussion on that, please. No discussion, call of vote.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Motion's approved, we'll move to the regular agenda, item number two, please.
A resolution declaring certain property owned by the city is surplus and authorizing disposition of such property by auction.
Mr. Noel is our public works director and rested up hopefully from the Saturday event. And again, thank you, sir, for the wonderful job that you pulled off with that.
Thank you, it's just not our department, that was a complete city effort, so I appreciate every, all departments who participated in that. Before you is the surplus vehicle and equipment, we come through to you before you periodically, after we've purchased replacement vehicles, all of these items have been replaced or now surplus and we need to dispose of them. We plan on using Purple Wave Auction, which is an online auction source, to dispose of them as we have in the past, as we're very pleased with the amount of revenue that is generated from each vehicle that we've sold to this point. Here, answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Noel.
Second.
Ms. White has the motion approved, second by Mr. Hamilton. Discussion before we vote on item number two. Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Noel, do you feel like we're getting a good return on our property that's sold in this manner with the online bidding process?
Yes, I do, I'm very surprised at the amount of revenue that we generate for some of these items. We've been getting around $3,000 to $4,000 per patrol car and on an old, 10-year-old Cherokee that had 90,000 miles of driving throughout the city of Raytown brought almost $4,000. I myself wouldn't have paid more than $800 for it, so. So I just, I'm surprised at the amount of money that we do generate, so yes, I think it's our best option at this point.
Do we set a minimum bid on those?
No, we do not, that's a requirement as part of Purple Wave, it's a no-reserve auction, and that's how they get so many people interested and look at all the auctions that they do have.
I did go to the website today to check it out, and it's very interesting if you haven't looked at it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We've got a motion and a second, saying no further discussion, we'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Item number three, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of salt for the purpose of treating roads and bridges and inclement weather from independent salt company in excess of $15,000, but within budget amounts for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Again, Mr. Noel, anything to add, sir?
Just that we have authorization from the supplier, they'll still honor that price of $53.42 per ton, so instead of waiting till this fall when I think the effects of $4 diesel will have an increase on the price of salt, we'd like to move forward and continue to refill the salt barn. Right now, we're about 700 or 800 tons, so we'd like, we're gonna purchase about 600, get it completely full, and then be ready for next year's winter operations. Here, answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Noel, Mr. Van Busker.
I was curious as to why the amount, I mean, that's good, is so much less for the 2010, 2011 budget for salt than 2009, 2010?
In 2009, 2010, what we did is we accelerated the purchase of the salt where, when we bought it in the summer, we got a much better price than if we waited till November, October. So basically, we moved up a year's worth of expenses on salt into that one year of 2009, 2010. So we spent about an extra $50,000 to get the salt barn full before November 1. So we accelerated some of those purchases, so that's why the expenses are quite a bit higher in that year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mock? Nothing?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Melson, excuse me, Ms. White has the motion to approve, second by Ms. Melson on item three, any further discussion? Call of vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Item number four, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving a contract with Mid-America Regional Council for grant administration services in amount in excess of $15,000 associated with the administration of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program III awarded to the city of Raytown by the state of Missouri Department of Economic Development Department.
Ms. Lynn is our community development director and is someone else who had a very big part of the success, you and your department, this past weekend, thank you for that, and the floor is yours to introduce.
Thanks, Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mock.
The item before you tonight is in regards to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program III that we've talked about at the last couple of meetings. As you remember, on April 19, the Board of Aldermen approved an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with the Missouri Department of Economic Development for this grant program where the city of Raytown is the lead city in partnership with the city of Grandview and the city of Sugar Creek. In preparation for the grant program, we released a request for proposals for both grant administration services and housing specialist services. This particular item is in regard to that grant administration services to assist the city with the tremendous task of administering the grant, including all the corresponding federal, state, and local requirements. As you can imagine, with the grant comes the implementation of the project in conformance with the various CDBG compliance areas that include environmental review, financial management, procurement, contract management, labor standards, equal opportunity, and kind of the list goes on and on. When we, when Mr. Benson and I have attended NSP regional meetings, every time Ms. McGovern from Mark comes to the meeting, the woman carries like several six-inch notebooks with her of correspondence and items that have to be turned in through the grant administration program. Quickly, the city realized that existing city staff does not have the expertise or the available time commitment to make sure that the grant is administered in compliance with all of those items. The city received one response to the request for proposals from Mid-America Regional Council and in particular from Molly McGovern with that entity. Mid-America Regional Council is the entity, as I described, that's currently providing the services in both of the other current Neighborhood Stabilization Programs. I think their expertise, in particular with very current expertise, is a tremendous asset to this program. The proposed cost in that RFP response is 18,000 in administrative costs plus 7% of the net project income. The cost for that proposal, plus the housing specialist services, plus any additional administrative or accounting services that we would have to have as the lead city, for example, the single audit that would happen during the audit process, all of those items are reimbursable through the grant. I would be glad to answer any questions, Molly's obviously with me here tonight in case the board had individual questions about her expertise or her experience with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. The second item on the agenda tonight is for the housing specialist.
Questions of Ms. Lynn, Ms. Melson.
I do have several questions. It says that Ms. McGovern does the other two stabilization programs, is she gonna have enough attention to devote what Raytown needs for the documentation for the federal grant?
I'll go ahead and say a couple of comments and then let Molly answer as well. My experience with Ms. McGovern and her ability to multitask many grants, she represents the small cities program at the Mid-America Regional Council that exists for exactly this kind of thing, where small cities often don't have the staff resources to be able to participate in programs like this, and she specializes in those exact programs.
As an employee of the Mid-America Regional Council, we can provide additional assistance through the other staff members at our organization to assist your project.
But would you have the ultimate control over this project even though you might have others involved?
Absolutely.
It says that the proposed cost is $18,000 plus the 7% of the net project income, and I believe in one of the papers here, it has an amount of $92,000, $92,200. How, that's the projected income that would be received by who?
As houses are sold, they represent project income, that's what they're entitled, that money comes back to the city of Raytown to be, again, spent on project activities. So, as in your grant amount that has been granted to you, a percentage of that has been set aside for administrative cost, so as the 7% of the net project income for the sales of properties.
So, what would be the total administrative cost?
Well, I'm only estimating because I have no idea how many houses we'll ultimately be able to buy and sell and what prices those will be, so I'm estimating based on what our average has been in the past project we've been working on with Gladstone and Belton.
And that would be the $92,000?
And I think part of that is looking for a way to compensate for the tremendous amount of paperwork that happens with each time we purchase and turn a house.
Correct.
And then also the incentive to make sure that we're using the dollars to the best of our ability.
Is there a cap on that at all?
There is not, the way that the, the way that the agreement is written, it is a proposed cost of the standard fee of $18,000 plus the 7% of net project income.
Okay, and so...
Which is standard with the other NSP programs, it's structured in almost the exact same way.
And so, that money that comes back in, that goes back through the city of Raytown? That's where the money will be kept, not through Mark?
The, the accounting, yes, comes to the city of Raytown, the funding, we apply for the funding and get it allocated to the city of Raytown as a lead city, and then we would issue that allocation either to Mid-America Regional Council or if approved, to Builders Development Corporation, depending on the type of activity that we're reimbursing for.
Mid-America Regional Council will invoice for any of their expenses to the city of Raytown.
Okay, I guess, you know, with that large amount of money, I was just making sure that there was a checks and balances through there of where that money was going.
Absolutely, the city is the financial, you know, both myself and Jeremy are that stopgap to make sure that, one, the reimbursement paperwork is there that shows exactly the activities that have taken place and why they should be reimbursed, and the amount that that gets reimbursed for.
Okay, on the later, on the letter dated April 10, it has an amount of money in there of the city's funding agreement of $65,000?
What it's talking about is the other, it's giving you the example of what they've done in other cities.
And so, will Mark staff be helping you, or will you have to hire others just for this grant?
Mark staff will be helping us.
And those are individuals that have expertise also in this type of grant?
In whatever particular assistance I'm asking for, so if it might be financial management or the environmental reviews, whichever that might be.
Sticky notes here, and then on, this is in the Contract for Grant Administrative Services, on page three, Article 7 Assignment, and this may be more for Mr. Will, the city and the consultant each binds himself and his partners, successors, executors, dah 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 dah, to this agreement. Is that something that, by that language, we can bind for future, I mean, I'm sure this, this grant may be longer than, let's say, the two years, and then we have another election, we're binding a future board into this language?
The language is binding for the term of this agreement, I don't know the exact year, I don't know if the timeframe's been set on this agreement, but it would have the effect, the future board wouldn't be, will be bound by the terms of this agreement, as with any agreement we enter. It doesn't mean necessarily that board would have not the right to terminate or do other things called for under the agreement.
The funding approval from the state of Missouri, 50% of the funds have to be expended by March 11 of 2013, and 100% have to be expended by March 11 of 2014. Certainly, the reason the termination clauses exist is if a future board of Aldermen feels that, for whatever reason, convenions or cause, they'd like to terminate that contract, they always have the ability to do that. What it does not allow, and maybe Mr. Will can correct me, is for Molly to then assign it to another entity without checking with us first.
Right, okay. Then on page six of six, it's Exhibit A, just a question on, underneath the Schedule of Work, it's got 100% of the total grant amount, nothing. I don't know if that was the end of the sentence, if there was more to be added there.
I'm sorry, should be, 100% of the total grant amount must be expended March 11, 2014. Apparently, I missed the end of my sentence, so we'll make sure we get it corrected.
Okay, and that, well, then that next sentence says, the total amount available funds to accomplish these development activities must be expended by March 11, 2014, dah 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 dah. Should that just be moved up and that sentence removed?
Yep.
Okay. And I will let you know that in the housing specialist, that sentence is also there.
And lies the problem with copy and paste.
On page seven of seven, under Reports and Information, it says that shall furnish the city such periodic reports, what, are we going to get periodic reports, will they be quarterly, will they be, you know, consistent updates, how will the board be notified of the progress of this grant?
Well, certainly, staff can continually update the board, I didn't know that, you know, we would be glad to add that to the contract if you're interested in doing that. You know, we are going to, based on the conversations I've had with both Ms. McGovern and Mr. Snodgrass, it's almost a daily conversation with staff when we're in the heat of the grant.
Right.
So, obviously, we would be very much, you know, this is something we hope will be a very positive public process, where the board will be very well informed about when we purchase a house, when that house goes through rehab, when it gets rehabilitated, when it gets put on the market. We want people to, in the community, to be excited about that program, and absolutely, you'll be very informed about the progress of the grant.
Okay, so, under that Reports and Information, it says shall furnish the city, which granted, you'll all be in constant contact and stuff, but I guess my question was, the board would be able to note that information weekly report?
Yes, I would hope, yes.
At board meetings?
We try to include information about community development and what's going on in the weekly report, so we'd be glad to do that in the future, we'd be glad to come, you know, we gave a quarterly report for community development earlier in the year, we could be including progress on the grant during that quarterly report as well, so absolutely, the board would be informed on a very regular basis.
And that's one of my concerns, because this area is in Ward Three, and so, I'm sure Alderman White and I would like to, you know, keep apprised of the information and what's going on, and I'm sure the rest of the Aldermen would appreciate that also. And I think that's it.
Mr. Hamilton, while you're there, please.
Yes, I just want to comment that I'm very pleased that Ms. McGovern is willing to participate in this, I am so impressed with her record of grant applications and the number of awards. Having written many grant applications about medical research in my career, I'm just, I'm really astonished at your success rate, I wish I had had you around to help me, maybe sometime in the past. And so I would move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hamilton's got the motion to approve, second by Ms. White. Further discussion before we vote, Mr. Van Busker.
Okay, so the cost of services, estimated cost of services is now at $92,000, is that correct?
Ms. McGovern put together an estimate based on the, the way that the financing is structured, is a base administrative cost of $18,000 and then 7% of net project income. And that project income depends on how many houses we purchase and what price we resell them for, so she had put together in her proposal that estimate, which is what, that the $92,000 amount, which is completely reimbursable through the grant.
Initially, well, initially, we'll be paying for that out of pocket, right, the city, our city?
No.
Well, it is reimbursable through the grant, but, or initially, we'll be putting the money in.
At the time that any invoice is presented to the city to pay, also will be presented a request for funds to cover that invoice, and typically, you can choose to not pay that invoice until funds are received from the grant to reimburse you or to pay that straight through the city.
So initially, we will not, the city will not have to be putting out the money, it will come directly from the, from the grant. So the $60,000 or so that was gonna be the cost of both positions is no longer, no longer correct, right?
I'm not sure where you got the amount for $60,000 for both positions.
Well, it was around that amount.
In the grant, in the funding agreement, here's an amount of $60,000, $65,000, that's the budget for administrative cost, and that is the true amount, however, your grant amount will increase as project income or project property sales are made, and that 7% comes from the new income over and above the grant amount. So it is, the 65 is based on the grant award, the first time through, the first, the money that goes through the system the first time.
Okay, well, that was just the information presented to us, and so I think everyone was under the assumption that both of those positions would, would cost approximately that amount. So how much time, Ms. Lynn, will you be putting into this project?
Honestly, I don't know yet. We are trying to meet with some of our other cities that are involved in this procedure. I'm currently meeting with the cities of Sugar Creek and Grandview to get a better handle on negotiating that interlocal agreement, which is the next piece that will come before the Board of Aldermen, and then, but I think the essential piece in this is hiring people like Ms. McGovern and hopefully Builders Development Corporation that do this almost on a daily basis right now and are neck-deep in it and know exactly what's required and how to do that at the best ability.
Other questions? No further questions, and having a motion in a second already, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
No.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Motion passes, moving to item number five, please. Thank you, Ms. McGovern.
A resolution authorizing and approving a contract with Builders Development Corporation for housing specialist services in an amount in excess of $15,000 associated with the administration of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program III awarded to the city of Raytown by the state of Missouri Department of Economic Development Department.
Again, Ms. Lynn, care to further elaborate on this, please?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself again. Let me explain, I'm a member of the Home Builders Association here in Kansas City, and there could be a conflict.
All right, thank you, sir. Please.
The next item that before you, is before you, is very similar to the previous item, this is for the position for housing specialist services with Builders Development Corporation to perform those services with, in regard to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. As we discussed before, before, or in preparation for the grant program, we released a request for proposals for housing specialist services to assist the city with the tremendous task of providing these types of services. What we were looking for is an individual or an entity to really take the housing component of this grant program from identification to transfer of ownership, a turnkey operation that could really take that burden off of city staff. The housing specialists will provide services such as identification of eligible vacant and/or foreclosed properties or land, acquisition of properties or land, identification and training of individuals and families to purchase the property, identification, supervision, and management of subcontractors performing the work, administration of loan and grant programs to encourage occupation, and various host of other duties that I probably don't even know yet that exist. As you can imagine, my, my background and the staff that we currently have do not have the expertise to assist in this realm. We, the city received one response for this RFP, and that was from Builders Development Corporation, from Michael Snodgrass, who's here at the table with me tonight. Builders Development Corporation is a nonprofit community development corporation dedicated to rebuilding the urban core areas and neighborhoods of the greater Kansas City metropolitan area. It's the entity that's currently providing the service on the other two Neighborhood Stabilization Programs, very similar to Ms. McGovern that you heard just previous to him. Their unique expertise and breadth of knowledge, which if you had a chance to review Michael's resume, is very, very impressive, especially within the realms of housing and, especially within the Kansas City area. His proposal, proposed cost is structured similar to the Mid-America Regional Council One, at a proposed cost of $40,000 for administrative plus 13% of total development cost per parcel or unit. As I stated before, that amount is allocated, able to be allocated either in conjunction with an invoice or reimbursement of an invoice when that, when that time goes. I asked Mr. Snodgrass, as we were kind of preparing for tonight, I, I'd had a lot of questions from the Board of Aldermen about the actual process in identification of a home and the rehabilitation or rebuild of homes, and so, Mr. Snodgrass has repaired some slides tonight to kind of walk you through the process. So, if, if it's okay with the mayor and the board, we'll have Mr. Snodgrass kind of walk you through that, and then we'd be glad to answer questions between the two of us.
Please do so.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn, and Mr. Mayor, and Alderman, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Again, my name is Michael Snodgrass, I'm the executive director of the Builders Development Corporation. We are a metro-wide 501(c)(3) community development corporation, not-for-profit in nature. As Beth indicated, we are the housing specialist currently for the city of Gladstone's NSP program and for the city of Belton's NSP program. And this is actually a presentation that was presented just last week to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The NSP programs that we administer, Mid-America Regional Council and Builders Development Corporation, were selected as a HUD Best Practice Award winner. We were the only ones in the state of Missouri to receive this honor, so we're, we're very gratified to receive that. I'll quickly go through as many slides as I can, because I know we're kind of short on time. The current NSP program, as we mentioned, has a number of different partners that are included in there, I'll go through their different slides. So as you can see, there's eight different cities, Gladstone, Belton, Lawson, Woodhites, Liberty, Sugar Creek, Lee's Summit, and then a very small sliver, Raytown, which we tried very hard to find a house within that three-block half area, but it was, it was very difficult. Again, the, the state of Missouri Department of Economic Development is the organization that is the sub-recipient or the recipient of the funds in nature. Mid-America Regional Council is the housing administrator, and of course, we are the housing specialists. Of course, all of this is done with local partners, local contractors and subcontractors, environmental mitigation firms, other agencies that do certain aspects throughout all, in order to make the program successful. Within the two programs, there are two different criteria, we, we work with what's called a Category 1 in the city of Belton, which means we can sell to the families up to 120% of median income, Belton is the lead city for that, and we received about $400,000 for that program. The Category 3, which is the vast majority of our funds, is about $2.6 million, Gladstone is the lead city. Most of that money, though, had to go to families below 50% median income, and I'll tell you, that's been a challenge for us, because we've had a lot of people come to us with contracts beyond that 50%. come to us with contracts beyond that 50% that we've had to actually turn down for some of the homes up in, up in Gladstone. Fortunately, in the Raytown NSP program, we don't have that same, that same challenge. Energy efficiency is a major component of all this, of all the programs. We're required to put in energy efficient appliances, windows, they have to be Energy Star. The HVAC, if we put in new heating and cooling systems, they have to be Energy Star rated. And I'd say 95% of the homes that we've, we've rehabbed thus far, we've had to put in new heating and cooling systems because they've sat for so long at this point. caulking and sealing and extra insulation just kind of comes standard with every house we do. Any new homes that we build have to be built to Energy Star. And as anybody that's a home builder knows, Energy Star is getting more and more complicated all the time. In fact, the criteria are changing about every three to four months. They're kind of ratcheting up exactly what's required for Energy Star. We're required to do four initial inspections before we even buy the house. First of all, we have to buy the house at a below appraised value, 1% below appraised value. One of the criteria was that the, they didn't want banks to profit from the foreclosures because all these homes that we've had to do thus far are foreclosed. Then we also have to do four environmental tests, mold, radon, lead, and asbestos. If there are hazards within each, any of those homes, one, with any of those categories, it has to be abated. And I'll tell you, every house has mold. I'm going to go through a few quick slides now. Some of these are kind of before and after pictures. You could probably tell which ones are before and which ones are afters, hopefully. If you can, I'm not doing my job right, anyway. This house is an interesting house. Every hall, every wall had a hole in it on the inside, and this is what it looks like 1690 Berry Lane, it doesn't look like too bad on the outside, but the entire exterior siding was deteriorating. It was crumbling. You could go up and push a pin through the siding. So we actually had to put in new, smart siding on the exterior to really clean it up. This is another one down in Belton at 923 Colburn. And this one had several major issues on the inside. This is an after slide. Again, you can see the energy efficient appliances. Another house down in Belton, not too bad from the front, quite a bit different in the And again, an after picture, 6301 North Broadway. This is one that we took on. It had pretty severe foundation issues on the inside. It had some major drainage challenges, as a lot of the, of the older homes will. This is one of the after pictures. This is a house that we started to rehab. We, we got into it, and the contractor was good enough to call me and say, you better come take a look at this because he tore off the walls. And on the inside, every wall was termite damaged. So we basically had to say, okay, this house is beyond repair. We cannot, in good conscience, rehab this house at an affordable rate. So we are able to bulldoze at that point, and we have a new house that will go up on that side. This is a house, again, that, it was a strange house that was built down in Belton. Kind of, I think it was a home kit that they kind of added on to over the years. It just made no sense on the interior. We held the groundbreaking with the city of, of Belton, several dignitaries from HUD and the state. And we hope to do that with the city of Raytown as well when the time comes. Here's some of the after pictures. We built a new house, Energy Star rated with rain barrels. Those are the actual rain barrels that are cosmetic as well. And it's geothermal heating and cooling. And I won't bore you with the details of geothermal, but it uses the heat and the coolness of the earth, about 180 to 200 feet down, and then uses that to generate the heat and cooling for, for the house. And this is another house in, in Belton, that little house that the city actually called us on. And this is where the partnership comes in place with the city staff. City called us, said, would you take a look at this house? We had to track down who the owner was. Actually, J.B. Nutter ended up owning it. We were able to get them to basically donate the house to us as a 501(c)(3). We got it for, I think, 2,000 or 3,000. But it had, the roof was collapsing. It had water, standing water in the foundation. This was in the middle of summer, and it was beyond repair. And now we have, of course, this is a geothermal well being drilled, and we have a new house going up on that side. Again, this is a cooperative type of model. We work together well with Mark, with the cities, with others to try to really change and save neighborhoods. To date, we have now, actually have done 26 rehabs, three acquisition, demolition, reconstruction. Most of them are now complete. We still have, I think, four to start rehab on. We have closed four, and we have several others under contract. Our marketing, we try to aggressively market these through traditional with realtors, put them on the MLS with trade shows, with the Parade of Tour Homes Tour. We had 17206 South Benton on the parade tour for the last couple of weeks. We try to flyer the neighbors, have open homes for the neighborhoods. We have a Facebook page that we update frequently. This is kind of a copy of our Facebook page. And then, of course, we invite as many people with, from the neighborhood to come through, as well as elected officials, HUD officials, and anybody you can think of to try to take a look at the house and get as much good publicity for the city and for the, for the neighborhood as possible. These are some of the news articles that were written. We were actually also featured in the Congressional Record. We didn't know it until I started Googling our name, and it was, they used our NSP program through the city of Gladstone and Builders Development Corporation in the Congressional Record as an example of an NSP program, and across the nation that worked well. I'm going to talk about a few of the challenges, of course, but I'll be real brief. The, the big problem with the Gladstone NSP program is it's very scattered. And, and not only in terms of geographic of the cities, I mean, we're from Lawson all the way down to Belton, but also in terms of the areas that were selected through the NSP program. The NSP III program is a lot more targeted in nature. They chose smaller geographic areas. And then within that targeting, the cities could then select further targeting to have the most impact. So, you know, we tried with the Gladstone NSP program, for example, in Belton, we have four or five within about a three or four-block area. But it's, it's a real challenge when all you can buy is foreclosed properties, and you're at the whim of whoever the bank is at that point, and if you're running up against any other bidders on that property. There are other challenges, of course, we got a late start. We didn't really get started on this program until about April of last year. We had about four months really to spend about $3 million. Sounds like a good problem to have, except of all the criteria and all the hoops you do have to jump through. I'll go quickly through the differences between NSP III and NSP I. You've probably heard these before, but I'll just kind of reiterate. Of course, with the Raytown NSP III, you only have three cities to really worry about. I talked about the concentration. And you have a bigger, broader range of the, the kind of parcels you can, you can pick up. In the NSP I, it had to be foreclosed upon. That was the major criteria. Now it can be vacant and/or blighted, which really opens it up to affect a broader range in the neighborhood. And then in the Raytown NSP III, 75% of the properties can be sold to families of persons up to 120% of area median income, and only 25% have to go towards persons below 50%. We, we're finding in there are people that are buying that below 50%. It's a lot of single mothers that have a job, you know, a good job, but the income is just not up to, to where it needs to be, to be over that 50%. So it's, it's not like it's a government program to just put people in homes. You actually, you have to have a job, you have to be bankable, you have to be credit-worthy to, to get into these homes. And that's the end of my slides. Try to be quick.
Thanks, sir. Questions, Ms. Melson?
I have a couple of questions. Actually, some of the first ones are on the amount of money. In one of the letters here, it stated, because you've got 40,000 here and 13%, but in one of the letters, of course, I can't find it right at the moment.
I can anticipate what you're going to ask.
Yeah, it has 45 and 12.
Originally, when we asked for proposals and Builders Development Corporation submitted their proposal, they had not seen the actual funding approval document from Missouri Department of Economic Development. When we met in preparation for the Board of Aldermen meeting, we realized that the amount, when they, when we submitted our application, we asked for more funding than what was actually allocated from the Missouri Department of Economic Development. So when they trimmed line items, they trimmed the amount of administration. So we needed to have the amount for Builders Development Corporation and Mark added together meet the amount that was in the funding approval. So what Builders Development Corporation suggested was for them to lower their actual baseline administrative costs and slightly increase their percentage based on per parcel.
Okay, because I found the letter. It's April 11th, and it has that. On would be the capability of carrying out all aspects of the grant-related activities. It says that the BDC was a relatively young organization and then reformed in order to reestablish its 501(c)(3) status to previous inactivity. Could you explain that, please?
Sure. The Builders Development Corporation was formed back in 2005 by members of the Greater Kansas City Home Builders Association, Fannie Mae, some architects, and some, a few realtors that got together. The reason for it was to go into older communities within Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, and even some of the first ring suburbs to redevelop and revitalize. At that time, I was working at another entity, and I was approached to, to run the organization. But they, I chose to stay where I was at that time. And they were unable to find somebody to run the organization. As such, they were inactive. They held several meetings. They tried to stay as active as could, but they didn't have a good fundraising mechanism. I've been working in community development, especially in this particular realm, for about 20 years now. My expertise is really startup organizations. I started an organization in Kansas City, Kansas called Catholic Housing, Wyandotte County CHWC. I've also worked at Neighbor Works Lincoln, Lincoln, Nebraska. I've worked at Lisk, Greater Kansas City Lisk, for a couple of years, ran their Neighbors Now program. And so when I was looking to come back down after my son graduated from high school in, in Lincoln, and I was looking to come back down to Kansas City, I approached the BDC and said, what'd you ever do with the 501(c)(3)? They said, well, it's still here, but we don't have any money to pay you. I said, well, let me, let me, let me run it for you, and we will make it work. And that's exactly what we've done. We've become very successful in a very short amount of time. We have funding and backing from the Hall Family Foundation, from H&R Block Foundation, from Country Club Bank, from the Home Builders Association Foundation, from several others that have gone along. And also, we've been very successful, of course, with our NSP program. So that's as a result of my coming onboard. We have staff, and we're, we have financials and all the things you would need to have to be a successful organization. So the, to answer your question about the inactivity, IRS has a, when we approached the Hall Family Foundation, they said, well, just in order to make sure that our, your legal status is clear, we would like you to reform. So basically, we reformed the organization in order to satisfy the Hall Family Foundation and to reengage a new 501(c)(3) determination letter, which, of course, we, we have.
And so are you a staff of one?
No, I have administrative assistants, I have a bookkeeper, we have contractors. We try to outsource as much as we can, just to try to put it into the local community, as many of the jobs as we possibly can. I'm, you know, we have several full-time staff people, but I'm the primary person.
And so for the houses that would be rehabbed or torn down and stuff like that, you would subcontract that out?
The actual work gets subcontracted out in every case.
And so that's followed all the guidelines by federal standards? There was, actually, yeah. Done, again, it's that scope of service page where the line that has that 100%, so that needs to be deleted, and then brought that other paragraph up so it can read more completely. Also, on the very last page, on page 10 of 10, under 15 notices, it has, under this agreement may be taken by David A. Warm, executive director, which I believe that is the executive director of Mark. And so it should be reading another individual's name, which would be Michael's, I believe.
Yeah, it'll read Michael's name.
Pardon?
It will read Michael's name.
Okay. On the Exhibit B, Additional Terms and Conditions, it has, under Personnel C, none of the works or services covered by this contract shall be subcontracted without prior written approval of the city. How would the city know that?
Like I talked about before, you know, the meetings that we've had with both Molly and Michael, and especially with Michael's expertise and what's happening in the other cities, is it's almost a daily communication on what occurs, what's happening with the NSP program, and communicating what is occurring at those locations. In addition, when they would submit invoices for payment, you know, we would be very well aware of what activities are happening on individual houses and who's performing that work.
Okay, I guess my concern with that one sentence, though, is the subcontracting, that, you know, we do know who's there, what's being done, who's, you know, that's, you know, legal individuals, excuse me, et cetera.
And I think that's why it's so important to have Michael onboard, because I don't know all of those regulations. And Builders Development Corporation and Michael's expertise is really important in all of that. That's their, that's their responsibility. That's their bailiwick for why we have them, because we could, honestly, I don't think we could administer the grant without some sort of entity to make sure that occurs.
Okay. And then on number two there about the reports and information, which was, I asked previously about those reports, information being given to us, kind of updates, what's going on type of thing. I mean, I still, I still feel that that's really important, especially, you know, for Ms. White and I, that it's in our ward, and we kind of need to know that. So as I'm sure we'll be getting questions throughout this process.
One second. I would hope that your experience with our department and the city and the line of communication that we would, you would know that that constant communication would happen.
Okay.
I would also make a quick comment that, you know, the city of Gladstone, the city of Belton have asked us to come and present before their bodies on numerous occasions. I'm at your disposal. Anytime you want to know something, I'll be glad to come forward and give an update on a particular project if you have a question. In fact, one time, a councilperson said, well, the grass is getting a little tall on this house. You need to get out there and mow it. And next day, we got out there and mowed it, when it came to our attention that the lawnmower guy missed it for some reason. So it's, you know, we, we're happy to come before you at any time to give you an update. It is three cities, you know, so it may not all affect Raytown.
Right.
Grandview will have their certain things, and Sugar Creek will have their areas, too. But, you know, we'll be glad to, and I don't know that you particularly care about those two, other than the administration.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a new process for Raytown. So I think the more information you can give us right now, the more comfortable we feel in the process and feel involved in it.
And, you know, our goal as Builders Development Corporation is not to just be here short-term for this contract. I mean, I love rebuilding neighborhoods and revitalizing areas, and not that areas are needed particularly, but just helping people and, and everything. So we try to establish long-term relationships where we can be working with you for the foreseeable future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes, I realize this is all grant money that these are being done with, so this question may be superfluous. But I notice everything's the Energy Star products, windows, furnaces, things like that. Each one of those have a different level of tax incentive rebates. Do, do these qualify for those?
Yes, they do. It depends on where the different, because each one, like you said, has a different sunset when that tax record will go away. Unfortunately, for us, the Builders Development Corporation, we're not-for-profit, so we don't get that tax incentive. We're working with a couple accounting firms, trying to figure out a way where we can pass that on to the buyer, because that's the incentive is to, to get that into the hands of the buyer. For most cases, the windows aren't a big, you know, it's not going to create enough... For most cases, the windows aren't a big, you know, it's not going to create enough of an incentive for, probably for all the paperwork that everybody would have to go through with the transfer part of it. But something like geothermal in particular, where if you can get 30% of the geothermal as a tax credit, it can make a big difference for a down payment for somebody.
Okay, thank you. I'd like the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Whitefoot has the motion approved, second by Ms. White. Mr. Van Busker, you're next.
Thank you. So the contractual agreement on the last one that was just approved for an approximate, approximate amount of maybe $93,000, that was with $18,000 plus 7%. This one is $40,000 with 13%. So does that, put that up in a neighborhood of $200,000, maybe?
It gets down to, similar to the Mid-America Regional Council, it gets down to how well we're able to perform. If we don't perform to the nature we should, then, of course, the amount will be much, much less. It'll be the amount in the, in the administrative part to oversee the program. If we're able to, to do our jobs and turn homes, because that's the main thing, is to get homes into the hands of homebuyers and to turn the homes so we can recapture the funds to do more approximately, is probably the best way of saying it.
Okay.
And again, in some cases, we've had cities ask us not to sell the house, but rent it. So in that case, we, it changes the dynamic a little bit, and a lot of different things.
Okay, so the total cost of both contractual agreements, then, for those services is going to be somewhere in a neighborhood of $300,000. Is that, am I right? Beth, am I, am I correct? Ms. Lynn?
Our estimate is about 200.
Well, his was around 200, but then we had close to 100 on the other one. So I think that adds up to about 300. Okay, thank you.
I don't think your math is correct, Mr. Van Busker.
Well, 40, 40,000 at, and 13%, if the other one was 18,000 and 7%, and it was 93,000, then someone do the math for me.
What's your point on the 300,000?
My point is that the, what was proposed and what came before the board was something far different than what we're seeing now in the cost for these two services. That's my point.
Okay, we're still in discussion. Anything else, Mr. Van Busker?
Does anyone have an answer for me?
I would like to clarify, the, the funding approval document that the board saw showed an administrative, an administrative expense. The percentage costs that are both associated with Mid-America Regional Council and Builders Development Corporation is, comes into play if they are able to expand the amount of grant income, okay? If they sell, if they purchase houses and sell them at prices where those profit dollars come back to the city and the grant amount increases from the, the original funding amount, then those percentages come into play. So what that is, is it's very similar to an incentive, maybe on a construction project, where they would get an early finish bonus. Those percentages amounts are to incentivize the, the work that both entities are doing. So yes, there was an original administrative amount in the funding approval that is the document that went before the board, and that's why we bring the RFP before you, to discuss the actual contractual agreements.
Okay, that, that answers my question, I guess. I, I, you know, again, we're talking about grant dollars, so we're talking about tax dollars coming from the federal government. So this is all off the backs of, the backs of taxpayers, and I just want to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Ms. White.
I quite frankly think it's an honor for Raytown to be a lead city in this. And Ms. Lynn, when you mentioned, when, when we were talking on the phone, and you mentioned the Mid-America Regional Council and the Builders Development Corporation, you at the time didn't mention Mr. Snodgrass. And Mr. Snodgrass, I was very involved with Lisk several years ago, and, and you have so many people through there. I'm sure you don't remember, but I do remember dealing with you and with Renell Neppenrude quite a bit. So I'm so glad that you're with this project, and I want the rest of the board to know that I see this as a win-win for the city. After looking at the pictures, how can we possibly think that anyone in, in our neighborhood, and Charlotte, I, I know, Ms. Melson, you're a little concerned, too, about keeping up with communication, but I would think that any of our constituents in that target area would want to see one of the fixed-up homes instead of one of the vacant homes, you know, and have a good neighbor in there instead of having rats or termites or anything else. I just think this is a total win situation for the city, and I'm so excited.
Mr. Ertz.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear more about the profits, the profit of selling the homes is actually coming back to increase the value. I believe this was a $1.25 million, which is what we were going by the numbers last, when this was originally approved. I guess I wasn't quite aware that, that that could substantially grow. Sounds like you're projecting it to substantially grow, and since you're here, you must have experience in making those grow. So I wish you much success in the city of Raytown.
Thank you, Mr. Ertz. I'm going to add also, I think that, you know, this is a fantastic opportunity to, to revitalize homes in our own community. We can, we can have Ms. Lynn and her staff running around trying to enforce codes, and then we have the same people who complain about our codes not being enforced, not wanting to actually have an opportunity to improve properties. This is an outstanding opportunity for, for us to use money that, that frankly, we are very dependent upon. Our tax dollars go to our public works, our street overlays, our, our payment of our emergency first responders, all of our staff. We don't often have an opportunity like this to help us revitalize our neighborhoods. This is a golden opportunity. We should see it as such. Yes, it does come from federal dollars that we all contribute to, whether we, we didn't take it here, those dollars are going to be used somewhere else. We have an opportunity to help revitalize our neighborhoods. We see this also as an opportunity to increase the value of our properties. You know, we can sit here and we can complain all day about the value of our properties dropping. This is an opportunity for us to increase the property values on these homes. It, it astounds me that we don't see an opportunity and go for it, but I think that we will vote, I'm sure, in favor of this motion. Any further discussion? We've got a motion in a second. No further discussion, I'm going to call the vote.
Alderman Whitefoot?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
No.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Item number six, please.
In order to adopting, approving, and authorizing the city to execute the First Amendment to the 353 contract approved in ordinance number 4696-01 between 63rd Street and Blue Ridge Boulevard Redevelopment Corporation, a corporation organized under Chapter 353 of the Missouri revised statutes, in the city of Raytown, Missouri.
Mr. Wilmuth, our finance director, and Mr. Cole, again, our economic development administrator, anything to add, gentlemen?
Yes, good evening. Just one thing, we were successful in getting with Jackson County on the land values, so we do have numbers now for what we think the potential increase to the taxing entities will be, based on the change, if you will, of the tax abatement being 100% of the property val, or the, the building value to being 50%. In 2010, the tax year that just passed, the corporation paid $13,800 to the taxing entities. In 2011, based on the land values, it will be $67,600, so a $53,800 increase in property taxes for all property tax collectors. That has the Raytown schools at just under $32,000, Jackson County at just under $10,000, the Fire District at just over $5,000, the city of Raytown at $2,700, the library at $1,600, the colleges at $1,100, the mental health and the Board of Disabled Services at just under $1,000, and the blind pension at $150. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions of the gentleman. Mr. Van Busker.
I asked this question last week, but just want to make sure this is correct. The only change in this 353 abatement agreement is just the number of personnel employed by GE. Is that, is that correct? The number changes from 220 to a minimum of 165. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional, go ahead, Ms. White.
Second.
Ms. White has the motion to approve, second by Ms. Melson. Discussion before we vote on item number six. Call the vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Whitefoot?
Yes.
And with that, unless there's further agenda items that I'm not aware of, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Who had it? Who had the motion to adjourn? Mr. Ertz has the motion to adjourn. The second was Mr. Mock. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.